The tax levy hearing of the Muhammad Seymour Board of Education is called to order. It is six thirty P M, Monday, December sixteenth. At this time, I'd like to remind everyone to please sign in, silence their cell phones. I'd also like to remind our visitors that in order to facilitate an effective meeting, we ask those who wish to make comments to the board guidelines and complete the attached public participation form and bring those to Dr. Lee. Public participation is allowed during the public participation portions of the meeting. Other than those times, board meetings are not interactive with those in attendance. Anister?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Lam?
Here.
Mahom?
Here.
Rock?
Here.
Severns?
Here.
McMurray?
Here.
Let's stand.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have had a chance to review the agenda for the tax levy hearing. There are motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Somebody? Becky?
Okay, give me a second.
Just a second.
Okay. Uh, this is a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, that is a free. Um, do we have any public comment? Okay. Um, okay. Heather, there you are. Hi, Heather.
Good evening. How are you guys? Um, um, tonight, as we went over the levy at the last board meeting, um, and tonight we have two scenarios in front of you. Um, one as we had discussed at the last board meeting, but then we had some other indicate, yeah, comments that we might want another scenario as well with increasing tort, even though we have the, um, the new health life safety bonds, um, in play. So we have both scenarios, just to kind of show what the tax rate, um, would be for both scenarios. And I have actually copies of scenario one and scenarios two. I know you guys are probably tired of paper. Just so you can see what the differences are. Um, the main difference is the amount in tort, social security and I R F. And then if you look, this is only the, uh, based off the assessor's assessment. So this is not the ballooned amount, but that you can see, um, how much the tax rate would be for twenty-four, twenty-five, um, based off of scenario.
So it's essentially when we heard your feedback from last month, we wanted to make sure that we're capturing, um, you know, the four dollars as we continue to implement our strategic plan and take a look at, at the safety aspect of that. Um, we are, as we, we discussed last month, uh, likely going to see a, a ten percent increase in, in property taxes. So we wanted to make sure that we were still being as, as fiscally sound and, and responsible as possible. So what we did there is reduce the I R F and social security, um, ask some and then raised up the tort some to be able to keep this tax rate flat, um, as we move forward. Or?
And that's scenario one, correct?
Yes, that's scenario one. Or as it was suggested, to leave those also to have, be able to take a look at, leaving them as, as presented and increasing the, the tort as well. Um, you know, we're, we're going to talk about a tort expenditure tonight and safety and security procedures that, that we would like to, to discuss. Um, we've got balances in, in tort and, uh, balances in our I M R, uh, social security. And I think the most responsible, um, ask right now with the increase in E A V would be scenario one.
Do you feel, Heather, do you feel comfortable with the amount that we have in I M R F and social security?
Definitely.
What's our current, show our current balances and those anywhere.
I'm sorry, I should have brought that up there.
And what would make I M R F and social security not exact numbers that we don't know?
What would make?
If we knew, if we know our payroll, we would know exactly what our social security payment is, we would know exactly what our.
Well, then, yeah.
And we have.
Adjustments and.
We have more, um, than we need at this point.
Okay.
Um, so that's where, um, you, you know, going with this as well, because if we don't do that, then we will just be putting additional dollars in there that we can't use for anything else.
What is, what, what can we expect to pay I M R F next year?
Um, I can figure that out. I don't know off the top of my head, just because the rate changes sometimes, I'd have to see what it's going to be January first.
I also don't know exactly what's that.
What do we spend in I M R F this year?
Like that?
Yeah.
It's in your budget. What your staff is going to be for next year.
So what's that number?
For the balance as of right now for, um, board is one point eight million. The balance for I M R F and social security is two point six million.
And what do we spend this year in I M R F and social security? What do those numbers have? One point eight.
I M R F and social security, hold on, I gotta go back to the actual, sorry, I should have had all this.
For I M R F, our budgeted, our budgeted revenue, um, was one point seven million, one point two million expenditure. So for, uh, estimated surplus of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, the beginning balance of that was two point two.
Okay.
So we're putting one, we're putting a hundred and thirty-three thousand into I M R F.
Yeah.
And they're playing fewer.
On top of.
Forty thousand.
Yeah.
So we're having surplus and we're only going down by half as much as the surplus that we had.
Expenditures last.
Additional surplus.
We're going down either way.
We're adding to it less than we would in scenario two. So we're still, it's still surplus. Using this year's number. You know, you don't know what.
We go, we go backwards some in, in two and backwards more in one. As far as the balance.
About still.
The surplus.
Or the surplus.
Yes.
Your surplus would go.
We're spending down our surplus under both scenarios. Our scenario two, we're spending down the surplus less than we are.
And remember, we can, I mean, that's, there's no limiting rate on it.
Yeah.
So if we, if we want to get more moving forward, but we think that this year, in, in light of, of some increased tort expenditures and to be as responsible with the increase in E A V, this makes the most sense.
And those funds are not included in our day's cash, if that's what you're, um, wondering.
Really?
Yes, no. It's just the operations funds. Um, our I M R F expenses for last year were one million seventy-four thousand and then our tort expenditures for last year were one million eight hundred and two thousand. So.
Um, Dr. Lee, your comment, being responsible with the increase in E A V. In layman's terms, we're getting an increase, but we're trying not to increase on that the increase.
Right, if we're, we're going to leave the rate the same, but there's a very high likelihood that everybody's taxable. Right?
Right, so we're, we're trying to do the best we can to, to ease that.
And, and still make sure that we've got what we can function in, and that's what we can function.
I think long term, um, we need to be thoughtful about the fact that at some point down the road, we will likely go back with a referendum.
Right.
At some point down the road. And it's going to be hard to, in, in this is totally my opinion, but I think it's going to be hard, um, to justify going back for a referendum if we increase the tax rate now and then go back and say, oh, and we need more money, because when we increase this tax rate now, that's not going to pay for new schools.
No, it's not, but we could, at that point, we could ease up on a couple of these funds.
Probably.
I just, I feel like really hard to build the trust of our community, to let them know that, you know, we are, we are hearing them.
I agree with that, but I don't know that we had.
I, I'm not looking for credit for it. I just, at some point, know that we need schools and I know that if we increase taxes now. Yeah.
We also need to be accurate. I mean, above anything else, accurate.
Which is why I think this scenario one is a, is a better option, in my opinion.
Yes.
Um, I, I like the way you played with those numbers, those great questions about what we actually need, but then that also brings in more money into tort. So.
So how long can we, how long can we leave the rate on those areas low in scenario one before we've been through the surplus and have to?
It's really not low, to be honest. Um, and like you said, in future years, that's basically the balancing act, is if I need more money in one fund versus another, then I will increase one bin and decrease the other. That's the beauty of those funds, because they're the only funds that are like that. So I've always been able to do that. So, but it's good, because we're also going to be getting some things done, um, with the H L S amendments that we'll bring to you later.
No, I'm supportive of that.
Um, I know there's going to be a lot of people that watch this that may not get to dive really deep into this.
Yes.
So I'll just, uh, reiterate, so the taxes for the previous year, four point six three eight percent, or four point six two point one percent. So we're actually lowering the percent that we're asking from.
Yes, the reason, you know, I had proposed that was because, you know, we always say we're keeping it the same and sometimes it's not within your control, because you, you depend on the assessor. And last year it did go up that penny at the, because it was the year before that four point six two four. Um, it had gone, it does that every once in a while, especially when they'll give you even more money than what you expected. So that's why it's went back to that, just because that's what we were balancing out to get the same rate. And it may go up a penny again, because it's kind of done that in the past here.
Essentially, we're flat.
Yes.
So that's what you've been working really hard to do is to balance that, so we're not adding more burden to the.
Yes.
Questions? Um, all right. Another discussion with a little pressure. Um, with no further business to come before the board for tax levy hearing, is there a motion to adjourn the tax levy hearing? Yes, or second?
Second.
Okay, so we can voice vote to adjourn the tax levy, uh, hearing. So all those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the tax levy hearing is adjourned. Okay. Do you want to? Okay, um.
Yes.
Stop it. Very good. Just keep it rolling. Work.
More, yeah, I'm Veralchi. When I come to the town. And no, it's, yeah.
I'm not safe. I'm not safe.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Little bunkers, it's not quite. Good, how are you? Fine, against? You guys want to show up?
Very smart.
Well, so.
Good.
Hi, Bob.
Did you hear you?
Hi, Bob.
They're not nervous at all. Not nervous.
Don't be nervous.
No. Be excited. I know some of these people in here.
Yes, be excited.
Me?
Because I'm.
By the way, but I do have a picture.
We start because it's immediately, so.
Okay. Sound good?
Um, the regular meeting of the Muhammad Seymour Board of Education is now called to order. It is six forty-five P M, Monday, December sixteenth. At this time, I'd like to remind everyone to please sign in and silence their cell phones. I'd also like to remind our visitors that in order to facilitate an effective meeting, we ask those comments to the board, read the visitor guidelines and complete the attached public participation form and bring those to Dr. Lee. Public participation is only allowed during the public participation portions of the meeting. Other than those times, board meetings are not interactive with those in attendance. Okay. Roll call. Anister?
Here.
Jordan? Lam?
Here.
Mahom?
Here.
Rock?
Here.
Severns?
Here.
McMurray?
Here. Let's see.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, we have some junior high students here. How are you guys?
We're good.
How are you? You want to introduce yourselves first?
Uh, I'm Luke Sweet. I'm a seventh grader at M S J H.
Um, I'm Marley Roberts and I'm an eighth grade student at M S J H. And today we're going to be teaching you about the bulldog way.
The bulldog way is being respectful, responsible and safe. There are many ways you can do this in a school day or even just at home. Some of these might include using polite language, kind words, uh, following teachers' directions, helping peers, and some of them might be small, like, uh, treating, uh, school property with care or even just waiting your turn and not interrupt. There are also ways you can be responsible. They might be completing assignments on time or coming to class prepared, possibly even just taking ownership for your actions. There's also ways you can be safe, keeping hands and feet to ourselves, walking on the correct side of the hallway, which if you've seen our hallways, you know that's fun. You need to customize correctly and, uh, just walking correctly and not like tripping or bumping into each other.
Um, the lessons we teach, we teach our students are how to be respectful, responsible and safe. Being respectful, responsible and safe creates a positive environment for everyone. Talks are based on teacher, teacher data identifying behaviors that need to, need improvement for a, a better learning experience. This helps us practice positive behaviors, create a better school environment and prepare, prepare us for success and both in and out of schools. Um, the things we do is worksheets, games, scenarios and posters, and I think that just helps us.
So we did a lesson and it was, you had to build a poster, see, to say like what would be respectful, responsible and safe. And ours was actually, don't be a turd, flush it. Apparently it wasn't respectful enough to hang up. Like, I don't see the problem. Um, but that was a fun lesson, because it let us engage in stuff, but we also got to be able to kind of learn about being respectful, responsible and safe. And afterwards, we went around the school and we kind of like looked at the posters, learned what we were supposed to do in certain places of the school and kind of just like what you're supposed to do every day in different places that are right and wrong. Because sometimes, uh, I've been doing stuff that is wrong in places that I didn't know was wrong. So when I went around the school, it helped me learn what I was supposed to be doing that was wrong, that I should have been doing correct and what I was doing correct that I should keep doing.
Um, we do a thing called Bulldog Bucks and a Bulldog Buck rewards students for demonstrating positive behaviors like being respectful, responsible and safe. These can be used for prizes, lunch raffles, or in the P B I S store. My, my E L A teacher does a raffle every other week and we can enter up to three Bulldog Bucks and we can just like, there's like a bowl and then we enter, um, our ticket in and we can pull for candy. Um, but we can earn those by like participating in class or having a charged Chromebook, which represents, um, being responsible. Um, a caught you being good is given when a teacher recognizes a student for going above and beyond during the school day. The student and their parents are emailed the recognition as a positive communication highlighting the student's, um, outstanding behavior.
You guys are really good. Um, one of our main focuses this year, just as a P B I S team in our building, is to really try to get more communication out to parents and students and staff. And so one way we're doing that is we have TVs also in our building. So if you've been in there for sporting events and stuff, you'll see we have our expectation reminder data, we have our O R data up there, we have our caught you being good data, um, just so kids see that on the frequent and can see what's going on. And then we've also been publishing some newsletters this year, which kind of incorporates all of the lessons we're teaching throughout the month as well, so that parents can hopefully reinforce some of that at, as at home. So do you have any questions for these guys about our bulldog way?
What are some of the things that you can buy in the P B I S store? What's your, and what's your favorite? What are the go-tos?
Go ahead.
You guys remember?
Uh, well, something that I like is you can buy like candy for like lunch and stuff.
There you go.
Or like, or sometimes like Gatorade and sometimes there's like toys and stuff, like squishes and stuff that are like really fun. And it's kind of just a fun way to celebrate, like being good at school, because you get a reward for being good.
Kids all food, so.
So I heard today about there's some kind of drawing, if you have a sub, like your class.
Yes.
What is that?
So our big data focus for December has been on substitute behavior. And so as a P B I S team, we have different ways to incentivize that. So, um, we took our expectation reminder and we kind of tweaked it as if kids are going above and beyond in class, the sub can actually acknowledge that student to the whole class and then they can come to the office and get, um, a candy bar for this month. And then also the subs have been nominating a certain class that has just been an awesome class. And so the, all the classes go on a raffle and then Monday morning they get raffled off and that class gets a popcorn, just popcorn, whatever class period is, just something, once again, just to reinforce that positive behavior during substitute. Because as we all know, sometimes kids don't act the same as they do, first of all, as they do teachers. So it's been, it's been helpful, it's been really positive, so.
I feel the same way when I fill in for Sonny in the board.
Mr. Fisher makes some great popcorn he serves, so he can bring it in if you need it.
There you go. I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I think you guys did amazing. You should be so very proud of yourself. I'm proud of you, I know we're proud of you. I think the bulldog way is amazing and, and so needed and it, it gives me hope and a time worth, we gone. So really appreciate you guys coming in, talking to us. I know it can be scary, but you did amazing and I think you deserve extra Christmas stuff. So. It can be scary, but this, this is awesome. I, this is right up my alley, I love P B I S stuff. I think it's so important and so needed and I hope that it can reach every student. I know that's asking a lot, but I think in time it will. So, thank you.
Yeah, you guys did great.
Yeah, good job, guys. Thanks for coming in.
You guys are welcome to stay. I mean, this is a.
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
I would have already.
You know, you guys.
Um, okay.
Empty the room.
For the agenda, you've seen the agenda for the regular meeting. Um, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Thank you.
Second?
Are you kind?
Second.
Okay. Um, this is a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Passes? Okay, so our consent agenda, um, includes both open and closed session meeting minutes from, uh, November eighteenth. Open and closed session meeting minutes from December second. Minutes for the December ninth meeting, bills as presented, treasurer's report is presented, personnel changes as presented and overnight and out of state trips. Um, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as? Is this okay?
Second.
Thank you. I need discussion on those. Okay, let's do a roll call vote on that. Anister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lam?
Yes.
Mahom?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severns?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes. Um, Dr. Lee, donations?
Yes, um, large month for donations, um, as our, our Y L C club, uh, with the packs of joy, um, at Lincoln Trail is in, in full force. So, um, you can see that we have several, um, various donations to them. Uh, Ryan Berg donated to, uh, Mom's Pantry at the high school in the amount of five hundred dollars. We have an anonymous, uh, donation of the social work fund in five hundred dollars. Uh, Dana Jones, uh, donated to the Boys Wrestling Program for fifteen hundred dollars. Um, Danville Grain Inspection, Packs of Joy for five hundred. My Credit Union Packs of Joy for five hundred. Melby Chiropractic for a thousand dollars to Packs of Joy. Champagne Ford City for five hundred dollars to Packs of Joy. The Young Family, five hundred dollars to Packs of Joy. And two anonymous to, um, the Packs of Joy, one in the amount of two thousand and one the amount of five hundred. Uh, Theron and Carrie Weisaf, uh, to the wrestling program for five hundred. Uh, Grace Church to our social work activity fund of a thousand. Nick Taylor donated to, to reduce lunch account balances of a thousand. We have an anonymous donation, um, for Lincoln Trail playground equipment improvements of twenty thousand dollars. The boosters, uh, gave, uh, to our dance activity account and cheer at fifteen hundred dollars each. Uh, Tim and Caitlin Bannon to Mom's Pantry for five hundred dollars and Champagne Pool Pros to Boys Wrestling in the amount of a thousand dollars for a total of thirty-five thousand dollars.
If this doesn't speak to our community, I don't know what does, so.
Obviously, the, there's, there's several that stand out right on the Packs of Joy stuff. Twenty thousand dollars to the playground, it's pretty cool. But a couple of them that I think just keep coming back that I just find amazing, yes, I know this, this is the third or fourth year, I think Nick's done a thousand dollars towards lunch balances for needy kids. I just think that's cool that he does that. And then the churches and the anonymous people that support our social work fund. You know, a lot of churches are, they do their own social, they, they do other organizations. But for them to bring the money back to us and put their trust to the school district and that, I think beats volumes. So it's a real exciting month, I am. About a thousand dollars.
Dr. Lee has something to, uh, with donations. I mean, it's just awesome.
Um, is there a motion to approve the donations?
Kyle.
I think it was Justin first.
And Becky will second it.
Oh, second.
Thank you to everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, okay, roll call vote on that. Anister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lam?
Yes.
Mahom?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severns?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
Um, okay, those are approved. Communication, let's see anybody from P T O M S C A Foundation, Justin?
Yeah, just real quick, a reminder that the Muhammad Seymour Education Foundation Annual Bulldog Bash will be Friday, April fourth in the spring. Something that we're going back to this year, which I'm really excited about is live band. Um, we're going to have a cover band playing live music this year, so, um, it's a band I've seen a few times and they're a lot of fun, so get your tickets today and make plans to be there.
Are you allowed to say who the band is?
Um.
Can you say who the band is yet?
Yeah, it's called structural, I know, structurally sound.
Oh, what kind of, what kind of covered music?
Eighties?
Yeah.
There any way we could get Dr. Lee and Justin to have a dance off?
Raise money.
Raise money. Yeah. My money's on Justin's money.
Pay like stop.
Justin, the celebration vote, I've seen Dr. Lee in celebration, my money's on Justin's money.
Not this way, I just, you know, if we're going, kind of goal we're going for, just an idea, if you could take that back.
We'll, we'll catch that at the next foundation meeting. I noted, Mr. Manus.
That thought's enough.
Yeah, we'll be happy. Celebrity.
We'll be, we'll be judges today.
Okay, I don't see any feedback from visitors, right? I didn't miss any, did I? Um, okay, board communication.
I can start, I don't have much more to add than what I've already added. Tonight was amazing and, you know, what I feel like right now, things going on in this world, but it's hard to find hope and I think we as a community need to continue to, to not lose hope. And we've got some tough decisions that we're gonna have to make together. The board and as a community come 2025, but I refuse to give up that hope and I'm gonna ask that everybody else do the same. I, I've been seeing a lot about Marco Casillas and his wrestling. He's only a freshman and he's doing amazing. So that's exciting to, to see. And then all these donations, it's just, I don't know. A good feeling, so. That's all I got.
Yeah, December, the donations make you feel really good, right? That's a big, um, and, and we know there's been good things going on all year. We know we've had some real big things to celebrate, like, you know, state title in volleyball and some of those things. But as you read through the reports, there's a whole lot of others besides the volleyball state championship, right? Your old swim did real well. A lot of our junior high teams are doing really super well. Um, and it's just exciting to read all that. And I, I guess just a shout out to our staff, uh, and our coaches and our program directors and our administrators. It's been a long first semester, probably. We're feeling that right about now. And, um, I appreciate everything everyone's done. I'd have a great first half of the year. Hope everyone has a great break over the holidays and comes back ready to hit it in January and we close the year out in great stock. That's what I got.
Uh, the, the last meeting we had, we were just coming off the referendum. I think we all had some really.
Big feelings.
All emotions and big feelings. But it, it was good to get those out. Um, and now here we are, the next meeting. To Becky's point that now we gotta make some, some tough, not tough decisions, we just have to make some good decisions. Um, which I'm excited that this group is, is gonna be the one making those decisions, so. Just wanted to point that out. Um, yeah, like Max said, we're, we're coasting into the holidays, uh, nine, nine days. For those who have not got their gifts. Yeah, just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Appreciate all the staff and what the fresh have done, so thank you.
Similar to Mr. Jordan, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. However, you and your family celebrate. Have a joyous season. Uh, remember that this is a season of giving, um, and a lot of people, as we know, are in need. Um, and very, very fortunate to be part of this group and, um, obviously our community is supportive as well. I hope the staff, teachers, students, um, administration find time to rest, relax, recharge. Look forward to a very successful and healthy 2025, so appreciate you all.
I don't have anything to add to that. Everything was put very well.
I'd just like to say, listening more, to hear more about the Bulldog Way tonight, just, uh, makes me pause and think about the Christmas season and how the Bulldog Way is a true way to live by and with a need in this world for more of that, I hope we can all move towards that and just be more kind and aware of our surroundings and other people's feelings and stuff. Kind of Jeff mentioned, there are people in need and knowing that there are people in need sometimes the Christmas season and kids being away from school. That's not the best situation for them, so I'd like to be thinking of them and praying for them as they have this time and just hope the best for them. And I wish everyone else a Merry Christmas as well.
That was almost like a clap.
I know.
Um, the only thing that I want to add, I'm gonna add exactly what you're saying, Justin, that, um, you know, I, as a teacher, I'm very much looking forward to a winter break. Um, but I know that there are kids who it's stressful to be home for work and, um, sometimes that comes out in behaviors in the classroom. And so I just want our teachers to know, like, we've got your back, you can do it. And, and kiddos, we're gonna be there for you and it's gonna be okay. So I hope everybody has an amazing Christmas and a very refreshing new year and some time away and some time to rest and rejuvenate and see family, friends. Um, and thank you to all of you for. I mean, that's almost dirty of helping our schools. Um, okay, next item is, is just Heather's update. I don't know that she needs to get up to say anything. Does anybody have any questions? Um, Christine Northrup, is she, yeah, she's in. Anything you need us to notice or?
Anytime I read a Christine report, I learn more about things I didn't know about. I've been around a long time.
So no, I don't have anything to add unless you have questions.
Thank you.
Have questions? Um, this Dr. Bagby next. Yep, Dr. Bagby's report is next. Reports in the packet, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I love that we're already planning ahead for calendars. By clicking down the road. Any other questions, anything though, Dr. Bagby?
Um, all right, Dr. Lee?
Uh, the only thing that I have to add besides my report is that just also in compliance with board policy, I've reached out to Mrs. Sizer and invited her to meetings, both either online or in person. Uh, just we have policy on that when people have put in to run for the board that we invite them. So that has been taken care of.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Lee? Okay, um, all right, let's move on to unfinished business. Press 117, the second reading.
Yeah, second reading for press 117 and going through it, just, um, some, some verbiage changes, um, through that. Nothing, nothing earth shattering that we recommend approval.
So we're gonna recognize that we approved, uh, press 117 updates as presented. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Please, uh, stay in line with the $75 benefit, correct?
Yes, absolutely. You've got 73 left.
For this year.
It's, it's, it's per day.
See you tomorrow.
Sparkling ice lemonade.
Like it to go basket.
Um, okay, we had a motion to be a second. Any other discussion? All right, let's do a roll call vote for press 117.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Mahome?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severns?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes, okay, that passes. Uh, last time we were together, we talked briefly on the superintendent evaluation process and gave Dr. Lee some tasks. In a second, your update.
Yes, so I reached out to Dr. White as we discussed about, um, some, some different options that we have. Uh, if we wanted to get away from the current tool, um, that we have. Um, that we did add the strategic planning process, the strategic planning component, excuse me, to the evaluation tool last year and then some, some, um, questions for our administrators. Um, Dr. White certainly has, has created a few different, um, superintendent evaluation tools. In looking at a few of them, they are pretty labor intensive on the person filling out the, the evaluation. Um, and, um, can certainly get a couple of those, um, samples to you. Uh, but again, they, those were created for different organizations. Uh, we can engage EDLS to where he can create one for us. Uh, that does come with a, with a cost. Um, and I can, can get further numbers from him if that's what the board is, is interested in. Um, or we can, we can gather additional feedback. Or if you guys say kind of what you're really looking for and then maybe Sunny and I can do a conference call with him. He's always open to that as well.
I mean, I'd look at the cost. I don't think we need to pay. Intelligence to come up with a reasonable evaluation process. So I, I just want to make sure we're doing the right things and how doing our part to make you better. I feel like at times we fall short of that, so. Just my point of view.
I don't think we want it to be labor intensive just to make it labor intensive, but being more labor intensive makes it better. And certainly, I think we look, I think there's a balance there, right? Maybe it's still complicated that people shy away from doing that. On the other hand, you want to make it strong enough to be a good information, so.
Why, why don't we do this? Why don't I send out, uh, a sample that I've got that he has created? And then you guys can compare it to what we currently use with the strategic planning component and the, the questions in that. And maybe take a look and, and then go from there. That sound good?
I don't love what we currently have. I, I think it's just, I, I don't love it.
What we've always done.
Not always. There have been times that we've done different things.
That's true.
I think that's enough right there to say, let's do something different.
That was one of my goals.
And I think our goals in having that strategic plan is really being able to evaluate where we are in, in general goals. Um, and so I feel like if there's a way to better incorporate strategic planning and maybe eliminate some of the how snappy of addressers, Dr. Lee, questions, I think maybe we.
I mean, to be honest, where I'm at is I want to know how are we doing versus strategic plan? Because we put a lot of time and effort in that and we said that's where we're going and we need to, we need to stay with that. And I, we, I mean, everything you've talked about with that before, right? We're doing the updates and all that stuff. So I think that's a key component. And then I think how you truly develop people is a key component. I think those are the two things.
Financial responsibility. I know it falls onto Heather too.
To some extent, I guess I've been around long enough to know that some of the financials is managing what you have the best you can, because sometimes you don't have much control over what you have. Um, I've seen that and lived through that. So yeah, there's, there's a piece of that too, but I, um, I really think it boils down to the strategic plan mostly and people development and management and leadership mostly.
Culture's a big culture.
Exactly. I, I mean, that's just where I'm.
Why don't you share what you have?
You bet.
What's our deadline for this January?
Oh, I think it's, um, I don't, I don't have my contract from it. I think, I want to say it's March 1st. And, and certainly I'm open to us signing off if we want to adjust that and say, okay, well, we're gonna do this more towards the end of a fiscal year or something like that. I mean, just because it's in that contract doesn't mean that we can't work together and.
Is there not a state statute that gives us a timetable? We have to have that done in.
No, not for superintendent. It's, it's all over the place. I've seen several different districts.
Well, if not, we ought to do it closer to year end.
It seems to make sense, in my opinion. How does that line up with the strategic plan and what does that line up with our budget if those two are, are married together?
They could have more to do with.
All your year end or just the.
I think it had more to do with if we were going to let Kenny go.
That's the deal.
To provide.
If that's on the table, if I could go that sooner than later.
That's my point. And again, we've had conversations like in this situation, it wouldn't matter, but should there be another superintendent?
If you've got a non-renew, you got a non-renew and large the time by contract.
And so that's usually what the timeline is for, that if you're gonna, if you're not gonna be renewing your contract, you might wait until end of the school year or two.
Got to your point. If that's really going on, we got bigger.
True, however, a superintendent could fall back on that and say, well, we didn't have my evaluation until May, and so how would I have known that I wasn't meeting expectations?
Well, that case.
And part of the review, that, that, that gets to my point, like, the review that we use is terrible. Like, should we be doing it quarterly? Should we be doing it twice a year?
Well, and, and I'd be open to say, if you guys want to take a look at that too and sit down quarterly.
In my opinion, I, it's, it should be at least twice a year. That's just my take. I don't want to add more.
I'm gonna head up that committee, Jeff.
Yep.
Okay, send out what you got. Um, okay, Heather, come on back up for the tax levy? No.
Maybe not.
You want to come back up?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind. Stay right where you are. Right where you are. Um, okay, you, Dr. Lee, I don't want to speak for you.
Yes, we, we are recommending, uh, the approval of resolution and the certificate of the tax levy for scenario one as presented.
Okay, so that was the first one that we looked at together. Um, and then motion to approve scenario one.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Justin. You have a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion on that.
So the reason we came up with two was that can't minor discussion at the last meeting and that was mostly by people on this side of the table. Because it's in the corner, like they say, fix everything, make, just make everything work, make everything magically work. Well, we went to it three times to say we were out of ways to make things magically work with more money and then do more money, but they, yeah, they want us to make it magically work. Do everything you can. And I did that before we asked, why would we go through that process three times if we had other options? Um, so I think we kind of felt that was a way to maybe infuse a little more cash in. I understand it may not be in areas that we have a lot of flexibility or can do things with. And that was the purpose behind that discussion and I still think that was not a bad idea. Having said that, if staff is, you know, asked me, is solidly behind scenario one, I will vote to support that. But I really think we've got to continue to look at things like that. I really, really do. Because we need, we need to come up with money where we can come up with money. And we're not being given very many options by the public. Just like.
Wholeheartedly agree. So when we submit, uh, we submit it with a ballooned scenario. And that's that 20% on the next page. We didn't talk much about that tonight.
That will be, that will be ballooned for our, our limited rates. Yes.
Thanks for asking.
That was all.
Uh, I'm in agreement with you, Max, like we spoke about the last meeting. Uh, I was happy to see that the Tork Fund, we've got a little bit more in there. Um, yeah, we just got to be super creative with what we have, but I think with respect to what Dr. Lee mentioned about the increase that we're already have referendum or not. And to Sunny's point, um, without, you know, burning what goodwill we do have. It's, it's a tough balancing act, right?
It is.
Um, but we've, uh, we've increased the support from the previous time to this past time. Maybe we can continue to do that. I, I, I'm not sure. I'm hopeful, but maybe this is a way to do that.
Just so I'm clear, this money cannot be used for the leaning impulse, right?
The only way to do that is through a referendum.
That clears.
It can only be used for the accounts that it was loving to be used. We have the limited ability to do some limited transfers, but nothing that was done. Transfer, not do that, nor is there enough of an increase to do that, right? It's not enough to make payments. It's just not.
Okay. You had a motion and a question. We have a discussion before we vote. So what you're voting for is in favor of, um, or you're voting for scenario one. Okay, let's do a roll call. Please, sir.
Anister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Mahome?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severns?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
Okay, for that. Um, okay, policy for calling 30 revenue.
Do you want to give an update, Heather, on, on who you've heard from so far and that we're still gathering data?
Yes, I actually have reached out to anybody that the school district has done business with. Um, for National Bank that has the government, as well as Fargo. Of course, Bank, of course, Fisher National and Ducey. Um, and so everything, I mean, there's a couple of them that have just flat outside of, I can't meet your money market account rate. Uh, but there's a few of them that are looking into some, they wanted me to give them an idea of how much we could invest. Um, just looking at, uh, 60 days worth of cash, I just kind of look to see what, because I like to have a cushion. I don't want to just do 30, but then also using the latter approach as well, you know, for what we think we can do on a month to month basis, but you know, it is somewhere between eight to 10 million, depending on what we, um, are comfortable. Like if we have another project, say we have another large project in Tork, you know, we might want to lower it, you know, for that project. But just depending on what we have, um, in the works, I'd say, you know, my estimates were around 10 million, but I think about today I came to the fact that, or found out that the transportation for a student hasn't been billing us, so I need to take that into account as well. So there's just certain things I need to make sure. That's why I say the eight to 10 million. So, so I'm still talking to everybody. Um, that was the biggest thing they wanted to know is how much and then what, what would be the different maturities? Um, right now, I, I was actually looking for some kind of rates, but, um, still talking to them to try to get to that point. To get them that information they need.
Do you ever look at Treasury Direct?
No, I did not.
Place to, to consider going. Um, Treasury Direct is just, it's a government website, shows you all the rates. Any of the, for example, Wells Fargo would have access to that.
Yeah, Wells Fargo flat out. Yeah, Wells Fargo flat out didn't want to.
Oh, wow. Yeah, that's surprising.
I take our ten million dollars.
Commerce is the one that's kind of iffy on whether they can even beat our money market accounts. Otherwise, everybody else, I'm still talking.
So you're. The tre, they're not willing to.
They, uh, just sent me in.
Treasuries for eight to ten million dollars every six.
I can check again, but the people that I spoke to that actually, they, um, handle some of our bonds. And they, they did not have any interest, but I can try to find some, some other contacts.
Seems odd that people aren't interested in eight to ten million dollars.
And of course, I did leave, I did, uh, not include any health, life, safety in that because we will need it, you know, for. Other items. Um, so I don't want to hold that up. And then also I had to leave out the, even with the. Eight to ten million, I had to leave out, um, of course, a lot of our capitals, our projects fund, because we use that to pay a lot of our loans. I took that into consideration when I figured out the amount. We have a large working cash account that we can definitely, besides what we plan on loaning out, that we can use as well.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, fuel bid. Talk about gas.
So every, um, for the past, well, at least as long as I've been here and I think before that, we have always done our bid with PBL. Um, just to get larger volumes so that we can get better prices. The last two years we've. Uh, which is the person that we've done business with for a long time, which is Ken's Oil. Um, again, they came in, the only in the lowest bidder. They actually came in, if you look at it, um, over the year. They actually came in a little bit lower than they were the previous year. Because of gas prices and the fact that we don't know really what's going to happen soon. We only lock in fifty percent at this rate. And then that way we can use the shelf price whenever we want to. So if it goes way down, we can go and use the shelf price at that time. So, but this way we do have the ability to lock in some fuel and have it ready for us when we need to. So we, we use both, um, the diesel and the unleaded. Um, and then PBL just uses the, uh, the diesel. So, um, they are going to also recommend approving their contract with, um. With Ken's Oil at their next board meeting. So I'm asking for your approval to go ahead and approve, and I would like to approve, uh, the, uh, two-year. It's just. A lot, uh, usually more economical.
Certainty. What, why is Ken's Oil suddenly, after all these years, the last two years, they've been the only ones to bid it? What's wrong? Why does no one else want to?
Um, from what I understand, there's just not that many people out there anymore.
One thing that, that I can, that I have seen anyhow, uh, it's all anecdotal. Your, your traditional Ken's oils and things like that are getting bought up by others, yes.
And then we're not, we're not big enough to put them in that's with.
We look at consolidating. Maybe in tool, Fisher.
That was my other thought. Is there any other schools that want to get in on this?
We could always look into that. I mean, I can call around and see.
Trying to create more work.
Um, yeah, I mean.
Maybe if we were bigger, we could find more bidders. I don't know.
Now, they did say that a lot of the places that they're going, they're the only bidder. So they, I think they assumed they would be here as well, but they've been very good to work with.
What do other districts do? Do they bid this out like this? They just bring the shelf price all year long?
Um, I, I would think that they bid it out if they don't, um, bid out their. A lot of people have contracted.
Oh, yeah, first rules, final the gas.
Yeah, so you know, those people do not bid it out, but I would think that they would.
I, I bid it out everywhere.
Yeah.
Uh, the superintendent recommends the approval of the fuel bid as presented, and Heather said two-year. Um, so a motion for that. That's, any further discussion?
We're talking about fuel, I add to transportation. I did hear on CBS National News today. So it's gotta be true because it was on the national news. A lot of school districts around the country are just continuing busing kids because they can't find. They're just parking their buses, giving up. I don't think we can do that, no. But I just thought that was interesting.
What are they doing? How are they getting the kids there?
It becomes, uh, according to the news, that becomes apparent.
Um, okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Anister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes. Yes.
Severns?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes. Okay, so that passes. Wait, stay. Got our resolution for a week. Do you want to talk about that or just?
Yes, I just wanted to explain because to me it shows how responsible Mohammed Seymour School District, and this is before my time, so I'm not like patting myself on the back. But how they, responsible they've been in the past, um, you know, they don't have to, but for the bonds, um. The alternative revenue bonds that they've had, they've actually used the sales tax that they're given off the one percent to pay those. So what we have to do every year is because those bonds are on the books for us is we have to abate them. Um, so that they do not get put on the tax rolls and, you know, be a burden for the taxpayers. So every year we go and we abate these, um, and then we pay them with sales tax. So I.
And that's because when we did those projects, we said there were going to be sales taxes in the projects.
Yes, and the majority of it is MPE. People have asked, there's some health, life, safety, there's the field house. Uh, but otherwise it's the land and, um, building of MPE.
What happens? We just didn't.
You expect those to be paid?
Every single one has got a little bit of a different maturity around the two thousand thirties, but I can send that to you guys because I have a whole, um, schedule for each bond.
I think you did last time, but I.
No, I, go ahead and send that out because it helps, you know, there's different ones at different times, so.
Why do we? Why don't we do this before the tax levy?
We do it at the same time, so, yeah, so I will take this, um, with me. And actually, you don't have to do this till January. But, um, I, I like to just go ahead and do it with the tax levy. That way, when I go to the, um. To the county clerks, I can get them both filed at the same time. But actually, the levy has to be done before the last Tuesday in December, which I have no idea where they came up with that date. Um, but then the actual abatement doesn't have to be done till January.
Seems like you would have to do this first because this would affect the tax levy, but.
You're dealing with the state of Illinois and you're trying to be logical.
Yes, that's the problem.
Don't. Don't fall into that trap.
Superintendent recommends the approval of the resolution for abatement as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? That's your roll call vote on that and Heather stay up here because.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna, uh, jump down to number six because that is also Heather and we're. Approval of health, life, safety amendments.
Yes, as you guys probably know, every ten years we have to do a health, life, safety plan. Um, work, uh, working with the architect to see what we need to do within our buildings. They're then. Uh, coded as A, B, C, D, depending on what, how severe they are. Uh, but throughout the ten years, you also may come across things that should, uh, be addressed with health, life, safety. So that's why they have the whole amendment process so that you can introduce new items. All of the items I'm coming to you, um, tonight with are items that we plan to use for that health, life, safety bond. Um, there's the, uh, three fire alarms. Uh, and LTE junior high and the high school. The biggest one is the LTE controls, which is, um, similar to what we just did at the high, or we're doing at the high school. The high school bleachers and the high school roof. These are all projects that have been identified as he, as health, life, safety. And then the, another two that, um, will be considered in this bond is, um, the controls that we already did get approval on. For the high school, I can, when you guys, uh, approve that reimbursement resolution, I can now go, now go back and pick up everything after Esser. And pay for those with this, with this fund as well.
That's where I was curious, because I thought we were gonna have to do that with the high school controls.
Yeah, that way I can go back and pick all of that up.
What, what are we doing to the Lincoln Trail patrols?
Um, I believe it is. Probably the same thing.
Controls and, and again, these are just filling out for the amendments for right now.
Right. What's, talk to me about the high school bleachers, which, those are the outside bleachers?
Um, yes, there's, uh, they are also looking at the inside. There are a couple more that I'll probably come at the next board meeting with, um, just, um.
Home side bleachers or visitor side bleachers? Because visitor side bleachers, I understand.
I don't, I don't know exactly.
The other piece of that, that we've got to go through is your inspection every, every year or two. That's these, this health, life, safety, these amendments are a result of the bleacher inspections of things that happened.
Yeah, people in this room, we don't spend a lot of time in the visitor side of the field, but I hear that's pretty bad.
It is.
I, I can't answer that. I do not know.
These, yeah, these are the. The next six, and so we may have a couple more at the next board meeting to start getting this rolling in January.
I remember several years ago, we were somewhere for an away football game and the visitors and, uh, the visitor side bleachers were rotting and, um. And the section broke out and our students, the student section were taking that board and kind of. Around like a flag and I'm thinking, oh, we're gonna be embarrassed when these days someone's gonna do that on our bleachers.
Superintendent recommends.
Rock doesn't remember that because he was busy playing.
Uh, recommend the approval of the health, life, safety amendments as presented. Does there a motion for that?
I moved.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's roll call, Sarah.
Anister?
Yes. Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Beckham?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severns?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes, okay.
Um, that would replace the visitor side football and inside basketball, indoor.
What did you say? Sorry.
Visitor side football, inside basketball.
Yes, replacement visitor side football and inside basketball.
Gym bleachers of the high school.
That would be awesome.
Those of that.
I mean, there's, if you're.
I would hate to.
If you have any type of.
That would be, that would be work to them. I, I'll verify that with Dwayne, but I would certainly think that that would be.
Okay, uh, we're gonna jump back up to number three memorandum of understanding with MSEA for the CM.
Yes, um, in your packet you have, um, as you know, we've implemented this program this year. Uh, we feel like it's been very successful, um, thus far and, um, a large part of success is due to our Sams. And so, um, this, we worked with Dr. Bagby and, um. Was able to, to secure some grant dollars, but then also didn't want to commit past this year because, you know, as we continue to navigate that. Uh, it will be a, a year to year thing. Um, just, I have come to an agreement and the MSEA has signed off. So we're bringing it to you tonight for, for approval, um, so we can show appreciation to, to those Sams and all the hard work they can do.
Thanks for finding money.
Absolutely. I'm happy to. It has allowed our principals to get in the classroom more and focusing on instruction so that fits right with. The grant money and the purpose. Absolutely. And our superintendent. The classroom team.
You learn that at the manor's meal?
I, I've heard. By, um, your students that you have been.
Well, the behaving of.
And, and, and so were the Jordan kid.
Everybody came together on that story. That's right.
Said, I won't tell my dad what I know.
Well, how about a construction grant around a hundred and ten million?
Okay, any other questions, comments, discussion on that? Okay, um, can, uh, the superintendent recommends the approval, the memorandum of understanding is presented. Do I have a for that? Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, let's do a roll call.
Anister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Beckham?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severns?
Yes. Um, okay, that is good to go. So Vision twenty thirty, thirty, Dr. Lee talked us about that.
Yes, so Vision twenty thirty is a, um. A joint advocacy initiative from several different organizations, uh, statewide. Um, the reason that I am bringing it to you for discussion this evening is because. Uh, it was mainly written by the Illinois Association of School Administrators, which is my professional development, um, organization. And, um, Vision twenty twenty, if you'll remember several years ago, um. What was born, the, the biggest thing that was born out of that was evidence-based funding, which certainly has made. A huge difference for Mohammed Seymour Schools and, um, you know, as. School districts refresh their strategic plan, um, so does this advocacy group, um, in, in working through that. And you can see on, in here that, that, uh, simply put, their main fo, focus is keeping schools safe. Attracting and retaining high-quality educators, enhancing post-secondary success. And effectively measuring what's working in our schools. So really taking a look at, at our standardized assessments as well. Um, two main things that, that excite me about it is that they'll really work hard with, with legislation to make sure that evidence-based funding. Continues to increase as it's supposed to, as we continue to look at, um, not being funded a hundred percent. Um, certainly they're realistic in understanding that we're probably not going to be there, uh, in the next few years, but continuing to add to that number. Um, that we receive every year. The other thing that I, that I, I really, um, think would be wonderful is that. The, they'll work with legislators to try to, to limit mandates and, um, the amount of mandates, um, in this state. Um, are, are huge and they, they continue to, to go up and what. What the, the initiative is looking at is, hey, okay. Whatever the federal government tells us that we have to do in order to get our funding, that, that's probably okay. But all of these state ones that happen because you've got an upset parent about something that passed, got, got something passed in Springfield. We need to get those in an optional bucket. So, uh, working together with, with that, um, is, is exciting. The reason I'm bringing this to you is, is that the more boards of education that pass this. The more strength they have in Springfield as a representative of, of trying to, to move that along. So. It's, it's up for your consideration, um, uh, next month, if you'd be interested in, in just passing a resolution, uh, uh, support for.
You know how successful they were in twenty twenty?
Well, they implemented the evidence-based funding model and that absolutely revolutionized, um, our, our school funding. So. Prior to that, and you know, Heather and I talk about the early two thousand teens, but, um, you know, in, in, in. When I was a superintendent in, in Little Watsik, Illinois, you know, they said, this is what you're supposed to get for your general state aid. And then they give you about eighty-nine, eight, between eighty-five and eighty-nine percent of that. And it was just called the proration, so. And then they would, and then your, your mandated categoricals that you were supposed to get four of, they'd give you about, yeah, they, you'd get two if you were lucky. And you were getting about eighty-five percent of the seventy-six percent that they were supposed to be paying you for transportation. Um, and you know, that was all based on your free and reduced population and we were about sixty percent. Reduced, so.
They give you one of the payments the next year, but then they cut that year's payments. So, so to.
Businesses can run that way.
The, the, this, this group had a lot of working groups and, uh, worked with a lot of legislators and ended up passing the evidence-based funding. Um, just in, just for one of them, to, to name a few of the, the initiatives.
And that's been a game changer.
It has been for us.
We need all the help we can get in Springfield, so.
Our firm is also talking twenty thirty vision, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lee. All right, approval of district office administrative assistant contract.
Yes, as, uh, with Sarah being moved to, um, her new position, uh, we interviewed last week for. Um, the office, um, assistant up front and, uh, we are excited to bring to you tonight Heather Burbaum. Uh, is a resident of rural Mohammed and has some students in the school district and, uh. Hands down was our best candidate. So, um, she accepted the position last week, so we're excited to bring her in.
Uh, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the strict administrative assistant contract with Heather Burbaum. I'm looking for that. Can you have a second?
Second.
Very nice. Okay, any discussion before we do?
I'd like to thank Sarah for all of her work in the.
Anister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Combe?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Saverns?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes, congratulations to her. Well, then I got confused, cause we also have Heather Smith and then I was.
Congratulations.
Um, all right, a closed session tonight is necessary for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees. And for security procedures. Is there a motion to go, uh, to go into closed session? Thank you, a second? Okay, let's do a roll call vote to go into closed session.
Anister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Combe?
Yes.
Yes.
Saverns?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we will go into closed session. We do not anticipate any business following closed session. Um, so we will turn off our YouTube and we will take a quick break and.